7:00 PM, I would like to call the July 23, 2019 College Place City Council meeting to order. Ms. Nyhagen, would you please read our proclamation?
I surely will.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bobbitt, I understand, would like to provide the notification.
Our kind Father, have we paused now since we invite your presence here and go out to the very east side first. We ask that you provide in your name the rest for goodness and Jesus sake.
Thank you. So, it's now our public comment period. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council on items not on the agenda, please step from podium and state your name and address. Seeing no one, we force a consent agenda approving this evening's agenda, approving the council minutes of July 9th, canceling the August 6 workshop, and approving the check register and financials for February 2019 as well as the consent agenda.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Ms. Nyhagen, seconded by Ms. Sherman. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We have -- you're going to have to listen to me read a lot. So, bear with me. This is designating July as Park and Recreation Month. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of College Place, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of community and region, and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and whereas parks and recreation programs increase the community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, attraction, retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development and produce wildlife, habitat for wildlife, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the city of College Place recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore be resolved by the mayor and city council that July 2019 is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of College Place. Given under my hand, the seal of mayor of College Place this 23rd day of July 2019. Do we have someone to receive our proclamation?
Ah, yes, Jim Dumont, the Park and Recreation Board Chair.
Who's this?
Jim Dumont. Chair of the Parks. Okay. Now, Mr. Dumont would like to say something.
Who is that?
Do you need me in here? I think it would be better. Harvey, sorry.
Who is that?
It's Jim Dumont. He's the chair of the Parks Board.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and let me take this opportunity to say, thank you, Harvey. You've done a great job as the mayor of College Place, and certainly the some emphasis on parks and recreation programming for youth has come from this council, and I speak for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, your board. We appreciate that support, that funding for absolutely the development of the community and especially the development of our youth. And, you know, Harvey had a little bit to do with that, I'm sure. We never talked directly about that, but as a former colleague and friend and neighbor, you've done a great job, Harvey, and thank you for the rest of the council for your support and continued to support because it -- parks and recreation does provide the values that he just read so eloquently that make this a community, and that's really what's changing in College Place. This is becoming really more and more a community, and it's a great feeling as a resident of the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And the second proclamation. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch sponsors a national community building campaign on August 6, 2019, and whereas the National Night Out event provides an opportunity for the neighbors in the city of College Place to join over 38 million people in 16-plus thousand communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, Canadian cities, and military bases worldwide, and whereas National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer and more caring places to live, and whereas neighbors in the city of College Place assist the College Place Police Department through joint community building efforts and support National Night Out 2019, and whereas it is essential that all neighbors of the city of College Place come together with police and work together to build a safer and more caring community, now therefore I, Harvey Art Crowder, Mayor, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 6, 2019, as National Night Out in the city of College Place and call upon neighbors of College Place to join the College Place Police Department and National Association of Town Watch in support of National Night Out on August 6, 2019. Mr. Rizzatello, do we have an individual to receive this?
Um, they were supposed to be here. They must be out on calls.
Okey-dokey. Well, let me take a deep breath.
So, can we talk about that just a little bit? If everybody doesn't know about National Night Out, 5 o'clock on Tuesday, August 6, at Pangar Park, it's really awesome if you haven't ever been. Just seeing the kiddos out there with all of the fire trucks and police cars, I mean, just a great event. That was my -- yeah, I'm glad we don't have a workshop that night so that we can go.
Well, I think we sort of canceled because of that.
Amazing.
So, City of College Place Farmers Market Week, August 4 through the 10th, 2019. Whereas College Place area farmers and ranchers provide citizens with access to healthy, locally, and regionally produced foods through farmers' markets, which are expanding and evolving to accommodate the demand for a diverse array of agricultural products, and whereas farmers' markets and other agricultural direct marketing outlets provide infrastructure to assist in the distribution of farm and value-added products, thereby contributing approximately $9 billion each year to the U.S. economy, and whereas farmers' markets service significant outlets by which small to medium, new and beginning, and veteran agricultural producers market agricultural products, generating revenue that supports the sustainability of family farms and the revitalization of rural communities nationwide, and whereas the city of College Place recognizes the importance of expanding agricultural marketing opportunities that assist and encourage the next generation of farmers and ranchers generate farm income to help stimulate business development and job creation, build community connections to rural and urban linkages, and more. Now therefore, to further awareness of farmers' markets, contribution to College Place life, I, Harvey Crowder, Mayor, do hereby proclaim the week of August 4 through the 10th, 2019, as the City of College Place Farmers Market Week. In conjunction with the observational National Farmers Market Week, I call upon College Place citizens to join me in recognizing and enjoying the many benefits of the College Place farmers and artisan market and other farmers' markets in our area. And I know who's going to receive this. Ms. Nysel. Those of you who do not know, the reason our farmers' market has done so well stands before me. Single-handedly, she really has made sure that we got vendors there, that it's organized, well set up, and well done, and just without Nysel, we wouldn't have the wonderful market and the expanded facilities that we've come to know and love, and that I could have been out of the first meeting of pizza. So, thank you so much, Nysel. Thank you. I appreciate your footprints. But I get to do around here that I just. I appreciate pizza. And, you know, I'm always amazed at our staff.
Yes.
And it's wonderful to have such talented people stay so long in the city, and I'd like to recognize John Ricard. John's been in the city for 15 years. He has done a fabulous job as both a planner and now the director of community development, and John is the driving force on how we grow, how we're born to continue to develop this vibrant community that I've come to know and love. So, thank you very much. John, did you start working here when you were 15? Or 10?
I was 16.
Oh, okay. Time travel.
Yeah.
So, you know, we have a council member who's been on the council over 24 years. He's kind of the living history of this city, and I'd like to take a short recess for some cupcakes so that we can honor Ms. Nyhagen and her contributions to how well the city works and how you all have helped guide and volunteer the city. But before you do, you don't get to get up.
Okay. I want to tell you, I had a wonderful mother. I was the eighth child of -- she had eight children. My father died three months before I was born, so she was left a widow with seven children and me on the way. So, and that was -- she was really poor. I mean, that.
7:16. Like, reconvene the College Place City Council, maybe engineering staffing assistants, Mr. Rizzatello or Mr. Gordon.
So, engineering staff and assistants, we issued the RFP. Folks didn't really respect us many folks. There is like conflict of interest because they work with the private development community. Through working with SafeBuild, which has done -- I'm called to do the inspections when we've been like low on folks so they could take vacation. They've done really good work. So, this contract would just allow us to, in essence, call upon them when we need to because they've shown that they do really good work, and this is just a pass-through cost. So, at the times where we're understaffed, this gets borne by essentially the developer or whoever's developing. So, it's a fairly straightforward thing, and there just aren't many outfits that have the scalability to go to the level they can in a short notice, so.
Questions for Mr. Rizzatello.
Harvey's on his way up. I'll make a motion to authorize the city administrator to execute an amendment to the city's agreement with SafeBuild of Washington to provide special project construction inspection and review services for the city of College Place.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Mr. Bobbitt. I think you were first. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Rizzatello, transportation project application authorization and funding certification.
So, this has resolutions assigned to just expressing support. We've been very successful at Transportation Improvement Board grant applications. We believe we will again. The two we are submitting this go-around is for Meadowbrook overlay because Transportation Improvement Board has a resurfacing program for arterials in which only mid-sized cities can apply, and they allocate it by district, which means that in that program, the only other city that can apply for it in our district is West Richland, so we're pretty much guaranteed money out of that. So, that's why Meadowbrook is on there because originally we had that with Lampertie this past year, but we got Lampertie but not Meadowbrook, and we think we'll get Meadowbrook now. So, that's why that is there. And then the Safewalk Sidewalk Project, that's just building sidewalks in respective areas, and that is basically implementation piece of that Washington State Traffic Safety Commission grant. So, the WSTC grant, that was for the engineering. The sidewalk grant, if we received it, would be for the actual construction. So, this is just expressing your support for it. Our engineering staff is working quite hard on giving these applications in early next month.
Ms. Sherman.
We talked about this a little while ago, but does this -- is this just the overlay or are we looking at taking a better look at that south entrance to Walmart?
So, this would just be the overlay for the state money, but that's not to preclude us from, in essence, doing additional work because regardless if we got this grant, you have to engineer anyhow, so that can become a budgetary discussion item.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions for Mr. Peterson? Mr. Pinkerson?
Mike, I think you probably addressed this already. It says at worst would be $150,000. It's scalable.
It's scalable.
And so, if it goes above that, what's the process or what would be the additional project that that would cover up to, let's say, up to 400,000, 500,000?
Yeah. The $150,000, that would be absolute worst if we got the full amount of both grants. It's not going to go above that just because from a scalability standpoint of the grants, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Mr. Pinkerson.
I'd move to approve Resolution Number 19-026, authorizing Transportation Improvement Board applications for project funding for the Lampertie, Meadowbrook, Grind, and Overlay project and the 2019 Safewalks, Sidewalks program, and furthermore certifying funding for both projects.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Pinkerson, seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Rizzatello. Moving right along, Lampertie Overlay bid authorization.
Okay, so, this was the successful Transportation Improvement Board grant that we received earlier this year, and that'll handle resurfacing Lampertie from Larch to College Avenue, and that'll include fixing some of the sidewalks because we have some sidewalks or panels that are just popping up because of the way the trees are and so forth. So, we have some engineering done on that. So, this is just an authorization to, in essence, put it out to bid, see what we get. We're running for this year at least really up against the deadline here because typically the asphalt plants close around October, November, so hopefully we'll get competitive bids. If we don't, this may have to wait until very early next year, but we're hoping that we'll get in and be able to get this done this year.
Questions for Mr. Rizzatello.
I have so many questions tonight.
Ms. Sherman.
Sorry.
It's very unusual, but you may ask questions.
Please. So, I -- we also talked about this, and I know it's not overlay.
Are we doing more lighting down there too at some point? Well, I mean, as far as lighting goes, as part of this project, no. There are power poles nearby, so we could talk with essentially Columbia REA and Pacific Power in the future about that.
Okay, we should.
So, yeah.
Other questions?
Yeah, that's nice.
Mr. Cleveland.
Did you want to?
Go ahead.
I'll motion to authorize staff to advertise the Lampertie Grind and Overlay project.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Cleveland, seconded by Ms. Selby. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Rizzatello, but you're not done yet.
Yep.
Transportation Infrastructure Board Relight Washington Grant Phase 3.
Okay, so, we've had three separate iterations of grant agreements with the Transportation Improvement Board. First one was to convert the wooden pole street lamps that Pacific Power owns, and that was wrapped up this spring. That was about north of $77,000. There was a second one with Columbia REA, and those were pole lights that they own themselves that has since wrapped up. The third iteration is there's random scattered areas that have street lamps that are actually owned by the city, so we had put in a third tranche of grant request to get that, and we had to get it under a deadline because this Relight Washington money had an expiration of the last biennial. So, luckily Paul got this application before that program went away, and we were able to essentially get a third tranche of grant dollars to finish it up. So, that's what this is. For, to my knowledge and talking with them, we're one of the last grants going through that program because that's not in the new biennial budget.
Questions for Mr. Rizzatello. Mr. Peterson.
Like, the LED lights, that was covered under, what was that grant?
That's this grant.
That is, that was lights and the LED lights.
Yeah, yeah, it's converting sodium to LED because the general principle behind it is there's less electricity used, and then you see the savings in the energy bill, and it was justified to TIB Board that represents the cost savings typically in the Colfax experience because the whole city was redone that way. Why was there roughly about 20%?
Have we realized that? Have we seen any of the -- so, our light bill for that, how that's calculated, we're seeing a reduction?
We're seeing a reduction. I would say it's too early to see the actual trend though because they literally just finished up both of the other two grant agreements.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Hernandez.
How many light poles do you think are left that would be impacted by this?
The areas we're doing are all College Avenue, big street lights, the yellow that end up at night, white yellow. All those will be done, the signal lights, the actual lights on top will be done, and then a few on Sherburne addition and pairs of big lights.
Okay, still have them.
Yeah.
Ms. Selby.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we approve Resolution Number 19-027, which permits the city to accept the TIB grant for conversion of city-owned streetlights.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And last but certainly not least for you, Mr. Rizzatello, authorizing the city administrator to sign purchase and sale agreements for College Place 80 DNR property. So, that 80 acre?
Yeah. Yeah, they just assigned random names to the DNR. So, this property, mentioned a couple of the past meetings, as you all may know, we have a need for additional acreage as we're retooling our wastewater treatment plant. We were very lucky in the fact that there's additional property available nearby with a willing seller. So, every -- so, our wastewater treatment plant property is basically surrounded by the pink line, that square, and then the square that's in the red is the property that's owned by Department of Natural Resources. Now, the state DNR, they have a general guiding principle that with their land holdings, they like having a bunch of land together. They don't like owning random pieces that aren't connected to other pieces. This property is one of those where they own this, but they don't really own things near it. So, I had a conversation with them a while back about if they were willing to part with it, and they said they were. They, based on previous guidance from city council, we directed them to do the appraisal because that's what the state requires when you're dealing with surplus property. Came in at about $256,000, which is a value for what you're getting out there. So, if this gets approved by council, it still isn't the end of the process because it still has to go before the Public Lands Bureau and it has to get signed off by the governor and then the Public Lands Commissioner. But we're very lucky that much property just happens to be right next to the treatment plant. Otherwise, that could have been a very messy project, and it's cheap relative to comparables.
Questions for Mr. Rizzatello. Ms. Sherman.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 19-028, which authorizes the city administrator to sign the purchase and sale agreement for the College Place 80 property.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Any further discussion? Mr. Cleveland.
I just want to comment, thank you for all the work you've put into this and all the exploration, both of us in the city's act.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Rizzatello. You now get to sit down. Mr. Hartley, purchase of meter brass.
It came to our attention recently when they started doing the meter changeout. Well, first, let me go back. We set up our meter services to handle a 1-inch meter, which is, you know, the larger size, but people that do irrigation on their lots use a lot of times a 1-inch meter. So, we, if we had to, if we had a 3/4-inch meter size and they wanted a 1-inch, we'd have to dig the whole thing up to change everything out. So, years ago, we started just setting everything up for 1-inch. That requires adapters on small meters. Okay, with the, with the Safe Drinking Water Act, they changed the rule and thought lead was serious, and I'm not denying that it isn't serious, but, but anyway, once you take something out that is lead, has lead, and this is a very small percentage of lead, you cannot put it back in. That was, so, I'll be honest, I didn't think about that in this meter changeout program, nor did Ferguson. So, now we've got these meters in the ground with these adapters that are, that have a small percentage of lead, but we're not allowed to put them back in unless we want to break the law. And so, here we are in the middle of this thing, and I've set them, we're keeping them going by having to change out just the 1-inch meters, but to finish this project, we need to buy these adapters that are no lead. And so, do you have any questions?
Mr. Cleveland.
Pardon me for maybe missing this. What budget would that be coming out of?
Sarah.
It's coming out of the same budget line that the general project and the radio meters are coming out of. So, I mean, we have extra money in that fund that's just not budgeted for the project, so it always goes.
Other questions for Mr. Hartley? Is this only when they change out the 3/4-inch meters?
Some 3/4s. I mean, we've got an array of meters and, but, yeah, it's mainly changing out 3/4 and getting the adapters to fit in the meter set.
I'd move to purchase of meter adapters and installation for an amount not to exceed $45,000.
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Selby. Any further discussion?
I have a quick question.
Ms. Hernandez.
Are these connectors going to be easily, to be purchased quickly and get them easily?
Yes, we've talked with Ferguson. They've got, they've got some ready to go. We did purchase some on a purchase order because we were able to. It's in our authorization limit. This gives us the addition. This gives us the additional revenue to purchase what we're going to need.
Okay, so you can just keep the project going?
Yeah, we can keep the project going, yes.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hartley. Ms. Kilgore, Administrative Fees Resolution.
Good evening. So we normally do an administrative fees resolution update generally just once a year, but we have had quite a few moving parts this year and lots going on, so we kind of felt the need to update it sort of mid-year. There is a list in the administrative content, the agenda bill form. I don't know if you all looked at that, but Lisa, do you mind opening that up really quick? Yeah, because there's this list of things that have not previously come before you. At the top there, not previously authorized by council. And then in the paragraph on the second page, all of those fees are things we've talked about here before that we're just now updating on the resolution. So I'm not planning to go through each of those with you unless you so desire. If you would like me to, I'm happy to do that, but otherwise I was just going to point out the ones that haven't come necessarily before you specifically. Is that okay? Okay. Okay, you can go back to the... So basically, just the fees that you haven't had before you specifically before are related to nonprofit daily fee for farmers market, a product challenge submittal fee for farmers market, and an application fee for special events within the city. Yes.
Ms. Selby.
I'm not sure who this question should be for, but what is a product challenge?
That is, if somebody is selling produce basically at the market that they got from a party, they're not the grower, which is, it doesn't fit into the requirements of the product that they say they're selling. And having the fee just makes it where it's not just a casual, hey, they're not doing that. It needs to be something taken seriously. So like the challenge offender, whether or not they're able to sell at the market.
Okay, so like if I saw something that I thought was, you know, they're selling my products, not that they ever would, but then I would file the challenge to say that Heather can't sell it.
Well, yeah, and that, all of the products are supposed to be locally grown or grown in Washington or bordering counties. So say if you knew somebody was getting something from Montana or, you know, that sort of thing that didn't fit into the regulations of what is to be sold at a Washington State Farmers Market.
But by having a fee, you keep it from just being, I don't like you, so I'm going to report you and see what happens.
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
Other questions?
Has this come up?
No, not with us. It's something that we learned about at the farmers market conference when we went to that, that this does come up at markets, and so it's been to have the structure in place.
Thank you for being polite.
It works, in other words.
Apparently.
Other questions? Or is this nice or... Or is it... Is there a motion?
I remember the authorized Resolution Number 19-029 adopting the updated city fees and charges of 2019.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Kilgore.
Thank you.
Nice all. Ms. Dory, employment contract, police sergeant.
I'm here tonight to present an employment contract for the sergeants. Maybe back in 2004, 2005, they were taken out of the union, and since then, they haven't had any document that really is specific to them, that guides them on what benefits they get or the terms of their employment. So we came up with an employment contract that Marie has looked at. Just a few, I mean, they have our personnel manual to follow, but some of the things that they need or deal with aren't addressed in the personnel manual. So I just went through and kind of picked out the things that would be different than our personnel manual. The first thing is the vacation. They work 10-hour shifts, so years one to five, you only accrue eight hours of vacation. So since they work 10-hour shifts, we put in the contract that they would accrue years one through five, 10 hours a month instead of the eight. Well, still, their salary will still be approved by ordinance like it is now in the five-step process, but we will keep the difference between the sergeants and the patrol officers at the current rate, the difference now, which is about 16%. And through my research, that's fairly standard with other departments. If the personnel manual and the contract are in conflict, the contract will prevail. Another difference is the overtime. Overtime isn't defined as anything over 40 hours a week, but anything outside of their regularly scheduled shift, which is how the patrol officers work. They will have city observed holidays off, which they do now, but there's really nothing in place for if they work. I mean, so we needed to put that in there. If they do end up working on a holiday, they would get their regular salary plus an additional, however many hours they worked at straight time. Termination without cause would either require three months' notice or they would receive severance of the three months. And then other items worth mentioning would be equipment and supplies. They would basically get the same thing that we would provide to the other bargaining unit patrol officers. And then they needed something to define the rules of their on-call status instead of it just being whatever worked, we put in there, you know, they have to be within, I think it's two hours when they're on call. So do you have any questions? Oh, Heather.
No, I actually don't have a question, just a comment. Thank you and Mike for doing the work on this. This was one thing that I was thinking about. Well, not every job has a contract, and so what does that mean? But for me, when I think about the work that these guys do, I think that this is one area where we can take a little bit of stress out of their life if this makes them feel more comfortable. And so I really appreciate this, and I think it's awesome. So thank you. No question.
Yes.
Just a comment.
Thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Selby?
Thank you.
Seeing none, thank you very much.
Last on the administrative reports is the resignation of the mayor. I will comment, and Ms. Diesel will kind of have what her response is going to be. For some time, my wife and I have been looking to downsize. We have way too much house and way too much yard. And we, over the last several years, continually look for kind of a smaller house, a very small yard in the local area that fit our needs, and we were not able to find that. Just on a whim, we went over to the dry city, started looking around, and found a very small house with a very small yard that my wife really liked. I thought it was very suitable, and so we made an offer that was accepted and put our house on the market, and that sold on the first day that we put it on market. So if everything goes well, we will be moving on the 14th of August and closing our house here on the 16th, and closing on the house in the dry cities on the 16th as well. I don't do this without a great deal of sadness. You have been a marvelous group to work with, and you've done a great job of leading the city. That said, the city is in really great hands. Mr. Rosatello's a marvelous job of structuring and how the city moves forward. You've worked a little on that so that we actually have a plan on how things are planning to go and what's there. That's pretty well laid out, I think, with both structure and finances and personnel and equipment to follow through and make sure that your current vision of the city follows through. It's been my great honor and privilege to serve with you, and I'm very sad to... So with that, Ms. Diesel. How are you going to find somebody better-looking, faster, and smarter?
I don't know how that's possible, but we have to get the ads out, calling for people. So we'll be accepting applications from now through August 9th. August 9th at 4 o'clock is the deadline. I am going to be on vacation from Thursday through August 9th. So when I get back, I'll review all of those, and we will schedule all of the eligible applicants for interviews the second meeting in August. So August 27th, we will basically do the same process that we did when we interviewed candidates for Council Position 7, Ms. Hernandez's position, and hopefully we'll find someone who can walk in your shoes.
Let's hope not, they're big in this one.
And I believe that Mr. Rosatello has something to say as well.
Yeah. So yeah, for all staff and myself, it's a honor to work for you hardly. We did order black for you, but given the short notice, it's not here yet, so it shall be here before you leave. But in the meantime, we had to put some together quickly, so here's a temporary certificate of appreciation until you get your plan.
I want to have a margin. Oh, that's beautiful, but... Oh, you never would. Thank you all. With that, there are three informational reports for your perusal, and we will go into executive session. Is this, this is going to last about 15 minutes?
Really?
About 10 minutes. So it is now 7:47 PM. I would like the room cleared, with the exception of Ms. Caldwell. And we're adjourned to discuss legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions or to discuss legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation in which the agency, the governing body, or member acting in official capacity is or is likely to become a party where public knowledge regarding discussions likely result in adverse legal or financial consequences to the agency. It is 7:48. We are in executive session. Okay. It is 8:18, and we are out of executive session. Is there any further business to come before this board?
I would like to say something.
You may say something.
Excuse me, I've had a really bad week. I would like to express how very, very much this man has helped our city.
You're here.
We would miss you. We would pray for you.
Well, I need lots of prayers, ma'am.
Well, I do a lot of praying, I guarantee that. We'd like to thank you and wish God's blessing on you and your life, and have you not forget that when you come back through here to stop and save your doors.
I will haunt your door. See what you do.
Wonderful, y'all, and we appreciate it so much.
Is there a motion to adjourn? It's been moved.
One second.
It's been moved. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. We are adjourned, thank you. And it has been my pleasure.